Ready, guys?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. This is the Committee of the Whole for Thursday, November 2nd, 2017. It is 6:01 PM. Can we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Melendi?
Here.
Mr. Gentry? Mr. Drizal?
Here.
Mr. Garin?
Here.
Mr. Troy?
Mr. Flack?
Here.
Mr. Quagliano?
Okay, we have a quorum. Just before we get started with the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Drizal is going to be the Secretary today.
We're switching things up on you.
Yeah, and I'll be, I guess, calling the meeting. So with that, let's have the Pledge of Allegiance. Could you please introduce our guests?
Sure. Today, we have Mrs. Morley, our Assistant Principal at Martin, and she has some student friends from Martin that she'd like to come on up. If you guys want to come to the podium and introduce yourselves.
I am Kayden.
My name is Bella.
Aiden.
Joanna.
Damien.
All right. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you guys would like to come on up here and take the seats and got some questions for you. Come on around.
Grab a seat.
Go ahead and grab a seat and if the light's on, you can talk into the mic.
Okay, returning to the role of Don Drizal, the Inquisitor. Hi, guys. How you doing?
Good.
Yeah? Thank you for coming out and helping us with the pledge. How was your school day today?
Good.
Yeah? What'd you learn? Everything always goes good until that question. What did I learn?
We learned everything.
What did you learn this year so far?
Multiplication.
Multiplication. Very good.
A lot more about decimals.
Decimals.
Uh-uh.
Multiplying decimals and adding and subtracting them.
Wow.
Four-digit multiplication.
Four-digit? Excellent. That's yours? So, did you guys learn fractions already?
Yeah.
No.
We haven't gotten to that yet.
Not a lot?
Definitely.
No.
Do you like fractions better than decimals?
No.
No.
No? Yeah, I think that's pretty universal. I agree. I agree. I agree. So, tell me a little bit about what's so good about this school year.
I like being the Alpha Grade.
The Alpha Grade. Ooh, he's got a name for it. I like that. You won't be next year, though, right?
No.
No?
Be the lowest.
But that's what it's like in school. You go up to Alpha, you go up to the big dog, and then you drop down again, and you get back up again, and you drop down again. Welcome to life. What do you like about school?
Um, we... Well, we have a lot of fun. Well, in 4th grade, we had a lot of fun.
Oh, 5th grade's all business, huh?
Kind of.
It's all work? You got a lot of homework?
Kind of.
Kinda, kinda not.
No? What do you guys like doing outside of school?
Basketball.
Basketball.
Soccer, volleyball.
Soccer.
Uh, I like playing video games.
Video games? That's cool.
I like playing games outside with my neighbors.
There you go. An outside game player. Cool. Go. All right, so, one big last question. So, what do you want to do when you get through with all your schooling?
Baseball player.
Being a teacher.
You want to be a teacher? That's great.
I don't know yet.
That's fine. You don't have to decide. Let me know tomorrow. What... Kidding.
Baseball player.
Baseball player. Very good.
Volleyball player.
A volleyball player? Okay.
Soccer player.
All right. Who are your favorite... Who's your favorite baseball player?
Uh, Baez, probably.
Baez?
Javier Baez from the Cubs.
Javier Baez. Oh, see, I don't hear Cubs things too well. And who's your favorite volleyball player?
Emily Day.
Okay, very good. And soccer player?
Cristiano Ronaldo.
Okay. So, when you grow up, are you gonna have just one name? You know?
I don't know.
Like Messi or... Who are the other guys? The other soccer players that have one name? Well, hey, thank you very much for helping us out. Do you have any questions for us? Good, 'cause we're bad at answering them. That's why there's seven of us. Well, there's supposed to be seven of us there 'cause it's hard for us to make decisions, so we all get together to try to figure out how to run the school district. So, that's what we do. All right, thank you very much. Thank you very much, parents, for bringing them out. And good luck with the rest of the school year. All right, you guys stand up. Squeeze in here. We'll get you on the district webpage. They always cut our heads out and just feature you guys. Here, move on up. All right. You good?
Never gets a little tougher.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys. Good job.
Good job.
And you're welcome to stay here if you want.
Nope.
Nope.
Thanks, parents. There's some grass growing outside. I'd rather... Okay, with that, we'll move on to the next item, which is number three, the Academic Spotlight, Dr. Schlitter.
And this one, I'm actually going to turn over to Mr. Armstrong. We have our Those Who Excel nominees. We were down at the banquet in Springfield on Saturday. It was a really good festive occasion, and we had some folks honored. And Mr. Armstrong sort of spearheaded the effort with our... in his internal communications role. So, I'm gonna turn it over to him.
Well, I will relish in this opportunity to correct Dr. Schlitter. These are not our Those Who Excel nominees. These are Those Who Excel honorees. These are folks who actually were not just nominated by the district, but accepted by the Illinois State Board of Education as honorees. And so, we are very pleased to have, I believe, all of our honorees here tonight. So, I will just introduce them, and if you could come up here, we will get a picture, I'm sure, with the board. I should, I guess, define what Those Who Excel is. It's the Illinois State Board of Education's Awards Program, which honors individuals who have made significant contributions to our state's public and non-public elementary and secondary schools. So, these are the best of the best. There are seven different categories of staff members and community members. And we have an honoree in each of those categories, which is terrific. So, first up, only because this is alphabetically, we have Mr. Altmeier in the category of Administrator. No, you cannot say a few words. No. Next up, we have Christina Biddinger, our early-career educator, honoree from Leguee Elementary School. We also have Tammy Broskow from the high school in the category of Student Support Personnel. In the category of Classroom Teacher, we have Mr. Andy Goglin from Heinemann Middle School. In the category of Educational Support Personnel, we have Merle Haylen from Chesapeake Elementary School. And then, in the Team category, we actually have four members of this team, the HHS Instructional Coaching Team. We have Laura Jenkins, Ricky Holton, Jack Town, and Emily Coffel. Is Emily here tonight? There she is. And last, but certainly not least, to this group, in her first of what we hope would be many return appearances as a former board member, Ms. Kim Skajja. So, congratulations and thank you to all of these outstanding people who help make Huntley 158 a destination school district. Let's grab a photo.
Can we get a picture?
I think you've... You want to come up front, Ms. Melendi?
Yeah. Do we have a plaque? You can hold the plaque up front.
Ms. Skajja, if you'd like to be Secretary again for the meeting. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We'll double it.
Thank you very much.
I should add just an extra note of thanks to each of these individuals because while it is the district who nominates them and puts together some of the materials, each of these individuals has to do a fair amount of work on their own applications as well. And they all did a terrific job getting everything in on some tight deadlines, so I do appreciate that as well.
Very good. Thank you all.
You can stay. You're really good.
Yeah. Okay. Apparently, we lost Mr. Altmeier for the rest of the meeting, so... Okay.
I should go fast now.
Yeah. Do... Next item. Do we have any public comment? Okay. There being no public comment, we will move on to revision and adoption of the agenda. And I am not very good at this, so let me see. We have... Dr. Schlitter, you have a presentation, correct? Okay. We've got...
Yeah, this is Committee of the Whole, so you don't have to worry about that.
Yeah, it looks like we got everything here. Is there anything that anybody needs to remove from the agenda? Okay. With that, I will make a motion to... This is a voice vote, to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay. Second from Mr. Drizal. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. On to number six, Curriculum Committee, Mr. Garin.
All right, we have a couple big reports here. First one, 6.1, is the E Report Card. Dr. Schlitter?
Thank you, and I think we can regard this as just a very preliminary discussion of data. So, you may have seen in the papers, the state did release on Tuesday, the 31st. It was actually at like 12:01 AM. Everybody unembargoed the data. Released publicly schools data. And this is the accountability data that comes really publicly available. So, from a test score standpoint, in grades 3 through 8, it's the park test for the high school. It's the SAT. And then, there's just multitudes of other data regarding attendance, finance, demographics, and things like that. Just one piece that I want to mention to you is that I don't anticipate that between the time on Tuesday when this was released, and you're seeing it now that we've actually had a chance to digest and analyze. So, districts right now are currently doing comparisons now that we can see all the other districts. So, that really will still be forthcoming in having those discussions with the board for today. It was really just a transparency piece. So, we saw in the paper that we had these released. I wanted to make sure that the board was aware. State school code does specify that we need to present these to the board and then post on our website so that they're easily available. So, we will be doing that. Just a couple notes as people look through these for the future. First note is that for the very first time, really extensive special education data is being presented in the school report card. So, it's actually on the district report card, and that's a new thing. So, anybody who's seeing that, and I mean, I see them every year, and I'm leafing through and going, "Well, this is longer than it normally is." And that's because we have real extensive special education data reported on there. We also continue to expand what's being reported on the middle school and high school especially. So, they're reporting things like 9th graders on track. They're expanding the high school graduation rate data for 4-year, 5-year, and 6-year graduation rates. And so, really, what they're trying to do is to just continue from a transparency perspective, making sure that we're really reporting a range of things that show student success in the state. So, again, for tonight, it was really just a first pass to publicly present, to post on our website. And then, as we frantically work forward, now that the other schools' data is public, we certainly will be working on putting together our comparatives to be able to move forward. One note that I will say, some of you may have seen in some of the local press, they sort of make those charts and compare districts. What they typically do, and the ones that I saw this time did do, and it's a little bit of an anomaly, so I just wanted to point it out. Some districts in our county are unit districts like us. Some are high school districts, and some are elementary districts. So, that means it's a whole range of different tests. Typically, what the press does is they average every single test score together and just line the districts out. Internally, what we typically do is say, okay, on the high school side, how do we compare to high schools? On the elementary side, how do we compare to elementaries? Because otherwise, we're comparing Huntley, including SAT scores, to, you know, Cary, which only has elementary scores. And it just doesn't make a whole lot of sense from a statistical perspective. So, I just wanted to point that out to put a little context to the charts you might have seen in the newspapers. Dr. George is working real hard to kind of put together some of our comparatives at this time, and we can come back with further analysis and discussion at a future board meeting. So, for that, just wanted to sort of introduce the data. And if there are any questions in a general sense, we could take those now, or we could defer for a later meeting when we can take a little deeper dive.
Any now questions?
Of the 107 pages of information that was released Tuesday.
Okay, it sounds like we'll defer for a future meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. And then, we'll move to 6.2, Huntley High School Course Proposals. Dr. Schlitter again.
Thank you very much. It's always exciting to take a look and see. It's kind of fun to look actually over the last few years to see how we've continued to grow and add courses. So, this year, it's the time when we want to add our courses so we can get our course booklet up and running for registration for our students for next year. This year, we... And it's similar to prior years. We've tried to kind of streamline our course proposals. So, we do have a number that deal with the Engineering Academy, and that makes a lot of sense with some of our areas of focus as we're still expanding that academy. We then have a couple that are extremely exciting to me because, as you know, we presented concepts around the Global Studies Academy and the Fine Arts Academy. We still have yet to come back to the board with the actual specific plans for those academies, but what we're doing with these courses is we're setting the stage. So, we don't want to have those academies ready to go next year and not have the courses ready to go with them. So, these courses are going to be very instrumental in allowing students to start those academies when those plans are set for next year. Then, we also have, of course, our College and Career Readiness piece through AP through dual credit. And then, we do have a few additional electives that really were identified from a specific need, student interest, or just other sort of unique circumstance. And so, you've got the sort of a table is the next two pages, and then the specific... Or the next, excuse me, the next three pages. And then, we've got the specific course proposals that were submitted by the high school. I mean, these are all courses that were vetted by the high school departments, by Mrs. Kish and Dr. Rowe, and then also by the curriculum department and cabinets. So, this has followed our process as well as curriculum committee. And we are here to present these. And so, with that, I would take any questions.
So, for the Fine Arts Academy, I'm noticing there's no dance classes. Did we decide not to do that? That's a great question, Doctor. Would you have any feedback on that yet? Or is that still in process? Okay. Thank you.
Our dance classes are currently sitting in the PE department. We have not... Our Fine Arts... It's still being in development with the Fine Arts. We're not ready to broach that topic yet as it's still being developed. We have had internal conversations about potentially expanding dance and opening it up to freshmen and allowing the sequence to just go up so more students have the availability to take those courses. Our PE department has really segmented off into a more interest-based programming instead of traditional PE, which I applaud. But dance is something that is being focused on. We don't have anything yet, though.
So, it... But it will eventually be part of Fine Arts versus part of the PE curriculum?
Um, that's still being vetted out. I can't say one way or the other. It's being discussed, though.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
They're waiting to adopt AP Dance, Pointing, and Kicking. So, like Elaine from Seinfeld. Never mind.
All right. I... Yeah, just a question. The Project Lead the Way, that particular course, that course is already developed when it comes to us. Is that right? It's kind of part of that program?
Yeah, the Project Lead the Way courses typically are. We have obviously some discretion in pacing and things like that, but it runs in its own learning management system, and our teachers go for the training to be able to develop that out. Yeah.
With the foreign language courses, like German was on there and sign language, if those are as popular as we hope and think they are, would there be plans for like a German II or something like that that would follow?
Yeah. So, what the review recommended coming out of last year was to add these as foreign language sequences. So, we'll be starting with the first year. You know, there always is a staffing concern, especially when you're adding one class. Difficult, especially in these hard-to-staff areas. So, just being upfront about that. But yeah, the intention would be to add the complete sequence. And again, remembering that we're focusing on biliteracy. And American Sign Language also does correspond. So, we would hope that as we add these sequences, there'd be yet another way that kids could earn that seal of biliteracy.
So, they could take Sign Language in addition to, if they're currently taking Spanish or French?
They certainly could. I mean, obviously, there's a fitting it into the schedule issue that kids would have to work with. But even right now, they could take two foreign languages? Absolutely.
Okay.
Just as electives.
Done? Any other questions?
No.
I wanted to... I'm sorry. I had one more thing. We do have in the works, which we're hoping to bring in December, a dual-credit speech class that's just about ready to go. And we're going to try to pair that because we do like to continue to add dual credit. We had a couple details we needed to work out, and we're gonna try to pair that with a robust... A more robust speech sequence in the building. We just didn't quite have that for tonight. So, our hope is that we will have that for you in December. We don't typically bring courses outside, you know, the main presentation, but I just wanted to give that preview that our hope is to have that one additional piece in December for you.
Okay. Then, everything looks good, and we'll move that to the board meeting at our next board meeting, whenever that might be. And we'll move to seven, Human Resources, which is probably me again. So, 7.1, Monthly Human Resource Update. Mr. Zare?
Yeah, just a few quick things to highlight here. We are going to be starting our second open enrollment on Monday. As you know, we're shifting everything over to a January 1st reset date on everything. So, we'll have two weeks for folks who would like to add our insurance or make any changes onto their current insurance plan. A couple other highlights to go along with insurance. Tomorrow's our last day for our interactive health screenings that are taking place. Right now, we're at about 450 employees who participated in that. So, I'm pretty happy with that number at this point. We'll have a complete report for the board. As you recall, we will be starting dual-language in the district next year. And we do have a couple of bilingual teachers who are currently in the district, but we are going to have to get very active in recruiting very early in this process to find our bilingual teachers. So we will be going out immediately to start looking for these teachers who are bilinguals as we get ready to start the dual-language program at the kindergarten level next fall. So we just wanted to make you aware of that, an area that we definitely have to recruit in very early to make sure we're getting the best candidates out there.
Any questions? All right, then we'll move to eight, Finance Committee. Your timing's impeccable, Mr. Quigley. You want me to take the first one for you?
No, get on it. Okay. Finance, eight dot one, payables. We have our purchase orders, accounts payable and purchase checks, disbursements. Are we okay there? Committee you two today? Okay, I'll move it forward. Eight dot two, revenue and expenditure report, Mr. Altmaier.
Thank you very much. In front of you, you have the September 2017 Financial Executive Summary. Fairly big packet this month. On a quarterly basis, we do provide you with all the treasury information of the district's investments, so that is included in your packet as well. Three months into the year, we continue to track within budget, which is a good thing. I think the most important thing that is currently actually is not even noted within your financial executive summary is the district did receive the fourth quarter categorical of 1.67 million just the other day. So that's good news for the district, certainly from a cash flow perspective, although we really, at this time, are not having cash flow issues. It's good to have the state finally make that payment to us and catch up. In addition, during the month, health insurance claims came in relatively high at $653,000. The good news is we are still continuing to track within the annual budget of 8.8 million, so that looks good. On our dashboard, if you are looking at our dashboard, I think the one item that really stands out versus a prior year-to-date number would be Medicaid, and Medicaid is significantly down simply because, you know, we feel it's the lag of payments coming out of the state of Illinois. They've opted to pay our fourth quarter categorical, but we're still waiting on Medicaid payments to come through. So we do feel like we will catch up by year-end on that line item, so I'm not too concerned there. On the expense side, we're tracking within budget on all line items. Tuition reimbursement came in relatively high for the first quarter of the year, so we're looking a little deeper into that.
We're capped on it, aren't we, though?
No, we're not capped on that, no. No, we're not. But we will continue to monitor that line item, so. Financial's looking pretty good, so I'd be happy to field any questions you might have on the September Executive Summary.
I have no questions, how about you? Anybody else have any questions? Mark? We have no questions for you. So, all right. Said that, then we move on to eight dot three, our monthly fiscal reports, your fiscal update.
Nothing, nothing to report. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any on that report.
Really? You got nothing going on in your office? Nothing?
Nothing.
All right, well, we got our.
Several of the, several of the items within my fiscal memo are related to items that we're going to talk about here in about 20 seconds.
Yeah, okay, okay, no problem. Then we'll push that off to 20 seconds.
That's a push.
Okay, and then we have our Activity Fund Report. No questions there? Of course not. All right. Eight dot four, bond issuance parameter resolution.
Yeah, so you'll see in your board packet, this is a fairly large document, which Chapman and Cutler usually provide us fairly large documents for parameters resolutions. This one is a little larger than normal simply because it does include the execution of an escrow agreement as part of the parameters resolution. So that's what you're looking at there. You know, as discussed at the last board meeting, the district has identified an opportunity before year-end to restructure, refund the Series 2003 General Obligation School Building Bonds in an effort to reduce the district's total long-term debt and restructure it accordingly. This is a parameters resolution. The resolution that you have provides for the issue not to exceed $10 million of general obligation refunding school bonds. It also authorizes the execution of an escrow agreement in connection therewith. The resolution also notes that Don Drizell, the president of the board, Tony, is part of the Finance Committee, and myself are hereby authorized to proceed to sell the bonds upon the terms as prescribed in the resolution, which is the exact same process we took at the last refunding. It's simply a resolution so that we can move forward, and if rates are right, we can go ahead and pull the trigger to close on the refunding. So with that, I'd like to make the recommendation that administration request the Finance Committee recommend the board adopt the parameters resolution at the next scheduled board meeting, next week.
Okay. Seeing as I missed the previous meeting, what did we do? Like pass that we were going to pass the, pass this? Thought we were passing something at our last meeting on the refunding.
We didn't. The last meeting was simply to have PMA as well as Eric come out to present the opportunity, and then we needed to, they needed to go back and have time to draft the parameters resolution and pull things together.
All right, I was thinking we were already there before, but, okay. Yeah, all right. So do you have any?
The only question I have is, since the last meeting, has there been any large shifts in?
In rates.
Rates or any?
No, in fact, as of late last week, rates actually came down about eight or nine basis points from the time that both Eric and Bob Lewis were here from PMA. So right now, the rates continue to look very favorable, actually going in our direction right now.
Right. Did you get an opportunity to read the email from Eric late in the day?
Today, no, I did not.
Okay. I saw it, I didn't get a chance, I was tied up, which is why I'm late. But there are, as you're aware, there was some tax proposals that were put forth. One of the proposals was eliminating the ability to do these tax-free bond reissuances.
Oh.
Okay, so, so by the end of the year. So it is kind of a big deal. And so he wants to get with us on a conference call here in the next few days to discuss it, which is fine. We should still move this forward, but we have to, it might just mean that we have a shorter window on which to operate as far as, we were talking about doing it for the end of this year and possibly doing it in the, you know, the second time for next year, that opportunity might not exist. So we just have to relook at if that changes anything.
Would it change the parameters to try and do it all now, or?
Well, you can't, you're limited to 10, 10 million in a year.
10's our cap.
Correct. Yeah, and I think we're, you know, we're still going through the process, I think, as swiftly as we can with Chapman and Cutler. We had the rating call, I was going to give you a quick update on that. We had the rating call just the other day. We are expecting our rating either tomorrow or for it to come in on Monday. Currently, the district is double A, but since 2014, since our last rating, a lot has changed, right? From the economy to the state of Illinois, to educational funding, to the district's financial position. On every single one of those, it has increased, improved significantly. I sold hard, very hard. So we're hoping that we'll move off double A. There's only one other district in McHenry area that is double A plus, and we're hoping to at least be able to match that, so.
Be able to get there.
Stay tuned.
Tony, do you have a thought on how serious this proposal is?
See, I have, and I apologize, I've been really tied up the last week with something, so I've just got done with it today. So I saw they released all these different things on the proposal, tax proposals and stuff, and I did get a really quick chance to look at what Eric forwarded. I have no idea what kind of traction any of this stuff is, I really don't, as far as what's going to happen, and I, he's, he's not certain either. I mean, it doesn't make a lot of sense that they wouldn't continue to allow for that. I don't even know what the motivation is.
On the proposal regarding estate tax, and I think the memo ended with, well, since they can't agree with the color of the sky, I doubt this is going to go anywhere.
No, right. So, you know, the bottom line is, you know, we're going to see if, you know, we were aware we had an opportunity available, we're going to see what opportunities we still have available, and we'll, you know, we'll act accordingly. But as far as it relates to this particular parameters resolution, probably still go forward with it, and I mean, we always pull it. If the next two weeks, if things change, we can just pull it, so.
And just getting caught up with the conversation, we do think we can do it this, for this year.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We are, we are definitely tracking.
Nothing changes that, it's just the option for.
It's just the option to double, I mean, to be able to do it.
Correct. And we could just let the parameters resolution expire.
Right. We don't have to necessarily act. I mean, the parameters resolution just allows us to act within a certain relevant range, so.
Right. And the range within the resolution is May of 2018, but we all know that the push is to get it done this calendar year.
Yes, correct.
But they did that because it's standard practice, six months out.
Okay, right. All right. So if you're both fine, then we'll move that forward to the board. Okay, and then eight dot five, levy hearing, Mr. Altmaier.
Standard operating procedure, simply a recommendation to have the levy hearing held on December 14th, as we do always. Now, truth in taxation, right? If our extension exceeds 105% of the prior year's extension, we're required to have a levy hearing. With CPI at 2.1% and the ballooning of the levy, we're going to be at about 104, 104.5%. So we're not required to have a levy hearing, but as we have done past practice, we still have one every year. We won't, we don't, and are not required to publish the levy hearing, but we will have the levy hearing. So that is the administration's recommendation, have the levy hearing, save a few dollars on publishing because we will not exceed the 104%, and this is simply what this memo inaction item does for us.
So everybody's still on board with that?
Yep.
Procedure, I agree. Good policy, and we'll move that forward. Eight dot six, preliminary tax levy.
This, this is it. So this is the preliminary tax levy, outlines what the preliminary assessed values are that came in from both Kane and McHenry County, so we'll talk about that in a second. But big picture, with CPI at 2.1% for the levy year 2017, before new construction, the district will extend approximately 1.28, 1.3 million in additional operating property taxes in accordance with PTEL. Additional dollars estimated at approximately $800,000 are for new construction. New construction is estimated currently from both Kane and McHenry County, and that can change at 17.7 million. So historically, McHenry does a very good job estimating new construction. We've had some blips coming out of Kane. What concerns me, and I'm trying to work with Kane to get a little more detail on that new construction number, new construction number for Kane, let me look for this really quick, significantly increased. Last year, new construction in Kane County was 676,000. This year, it's 3.2 million. So I do want to make sure and feel good that that is a good number. But for now, based on those preliminary estimates, it doesn't hurt to go ahead and levy for those additional dollars, which is also what the balloon does.
The, in the corporate center, the, I'm trying to think of the manufacturer, the engineering company.
Hywin?
Hywin.
Hywin, good, yeah.
Yeah, they're.
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
Their buildings in Kane County.
Yeah, and there's the Advocate Health Center.
Right.
There's a few things over in the Huntley Corporate Park area that went up.
Yeah, so there's a slight possibility they might. Okay, but I would check, I agree, you should check.
Okay. Give you a little detail on the EAVs, which is always nice to see. 2017 EAV before board review, right, based on these preliminary estimates, increased 7.5% to approximately 1.3 billion. For the board members that have been around a while, 1.34 billion was our previous high back in 2009, 10 timeframe before we started to see a significant decline in EAV. So we're finally back to EAV in the days of 2008 and '09 timeframe. New construction approximates 17.7 million, decreased from prior years, if you recall, 45 million, primarily due to last year's TIF of 24.4 million. So taking that out, we're pretty flat with new construction over the last three years, approximating about $18 million a year. Kane County's EAV, kind of separating the two, Kane County's EAV representing 20.3% of the overall taxing district, is estimated to increase 7.9% from 253 million in EAV to 273 million, where he talked about new construction. McHenry County's EAV, including the current year's new construction, is estimated to increase 7.4% from 992 million to 1 billion and 65 million. New construction is estimated at 14.5 million, primarily driven right now by residential property. Consistent with prior year, we balloon the levy to make sure that we don't leave any new construction on the table. With a 1% balloon, the levy is in excess of the current estimated extension by about $630,000. Although unlikely, the overestimate of 1%, 632,000, will cover the district for an additional 13.5 million of new construction. Last year, if you recall, because of the TIF and because new construction was so high, we ballooned, we didn't do a 1% balloon, we did a $1 million balloon. So 632,000 is, in my opinion, reasonable. So with that, the Finance Committee or administration recommends the Finance Committee have the Board of Education approve this preliminary 2017 tax levy at the November 9th board meeting, but then again at the levy hearing in December. So this gives the board an opportunity and the community to see the levy at least 21 days in advance of the actual levy hearing.
All right. Question, how does Senate Bill 851 impact this levy?
1.3 million.
Okay.
So right now, at 2.1%, if we were to freeze the extension increase of 2.1%, that would be a freeze of that 1.3 million of additional property tax revenue to the district.
Okay, so it's, the freeze is the percentage increase, not the dollar amount of the levy? Is that my?
Correct.
Taking CPI out of the equation.
Yeah, it would, it would essentially, the law would probably be written that it would be a zero CPI as part of the calculation.
Right, they would still allow you to, you know.
New construction would still come through, we believe.
I haven't read this, but my presumption is you'd still get new construction.
Right. And you would still be allowed to extend the increase in bond and interest. You know, that was always an issue in the past when people had talked about a property tax freeze. I mean, there's a lot of little things that need to be considered.
So if you're in an area with a lot of growth and new construction, you're not going to be as impacted as those with just stagnant.
Well, you're still, you're still heavily impacted by not, by not being able to levy the additional amount of CPI, 2.1%. And 2.1%, as we all know, is the highest CPI we've had in quite a long time. And so a lot of districts that have been paying out on union contracts and have written recently union contracts, knowing that CPI is currently at 2.1%, this will weigh heavy on those districts, including this district. Because it's not just 1.3 million this year, it's 1.3 million every year.
Compounded, compounded every year, yeah.
And if it's a two-year tax freeze, right now, CPI is trending and tracking like it could be another 2%. So that would be another 1.2 to 1.3, well, it'd be 1.3 to 1.4 after compounding for next year. So it's, it's worth contacting our legislators over.
All right, the, do you have any indication? I mean, I just know when I get my assessed value, the. All right. Do you have any indication, I mean, I just know when I get my assessed value, that, again, I did see that they were increasing at a greater rate than they have been, but the reason was mostly the state equalization factor that had come through. And again, if everybody's EAV increases because of something like that, that means everybody's in the same boat, and again, these rates you can see on the schedule get our index downward because of the CPI increase, we should all be, you know, you basically should just be staring at a 2.1% increase, all things being equal, from that same point. But do you have any indication that there's EAV increases going on, other than just for state equalization?
I do not.
Okay. So, as long as everybody's in the same boat.
Yeah, certainly, you know, we have a very large taxing district with several townships and a few township assessors that, you know, I am sure there are neighborhoods that went up.
Individually changed.
That individually changed by more than the state equalization factor.
Okay.
You know, I'd like to end with, and we always present this, so I certainly want to present this to the community, at 2.1%, a homeowner with a $200,000 home will see an approximate $79 increase in their overall property tax bill for the school district. So please note, exclusive of that, 2.1% taxpayers should be aware that individual bills may go up or down based on individual assessments as determined by your township assessor. But if everybody's assessed value stayed completely flat with that average home value, it would be $79,000 for a $200,000 EAV home.
79.
Or market value, excuse me.
79.
79.
79,000.
Yeah, not 1,000.
Did I say 1,000?
Yeah.
Retract. Thank you.
Not that this gets recorded or anything. All right. Does anybody have any questions, concerns about what you're seeing here?
I mean, I always annually get a little skittish on kind of trimming the balloon, so kind of throw out there, maybe that million dollar flat dollar might be the way to go. Just because there's consistency, it's kind of simple, and then it does give a pretty good cushion without being over the top.
Well, if we did a million dollar flat amount.
Yeah, what could we absorb? How far off?
We would definitely be over the 105%, which is fine, because we're going to have a levy hearing anyway. But the overestimate at a million dollars would probably approximate 18 million. We'd have to be off on new construction by 18 or 19 million.
No, I was thinking that way.
Or, I mean, you were trying to have it so that we weren't ballooning as much?
No, ballooning more.
More, okay.
To cover any craziness in the assessments.
All right. So talk about that.
That was basically.
I'd be the opposite, but that's okay. I don't need to hedge that much. But I don't know how you feel, Mike. You're indifferent. You're Switzerland.
Yeah, okay. New construction at 13 million, so at the 1% balloon, new construction would have to be off by 76%.
Don't quantify it that way.
If we ballooned it a million dollars, that would almost mean that our new construction is off by 100%. It would have to come in at 36 million versus 17.7.
See again, I don't like looking at it like.
632 covers 13 million.
Correct. And 13, 0.2 million is about 76% of the current estimate of new construction. It's a pretty good cushion.
Okay, I can be convinced.
Okay. Hopefully Kane County got.
We've got it removed.
Yeah, I'm sure it's fine.
Well, again, they're probably.
That's a lot of new construction.
Yeah, they're probably. So you should be, that's what I'm saying, you should be covered from that respect. So I would just say retain it as it has been presented. And I'm okay with it. Mr. Ambidland, you are okay with that? Kevin, you're kind of okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Then that's what we'll do.
We'll roll this forward. Thank you very much.
All right. 8.7, Hisby waiver of application for statement of affairs. What kind of affairs are you having, Mr. Almeyer?
Correct. This is simply a recommendation, kind of standard operating procedures, as it has been the last several years, is to have a waiver hearing the same evening we have the levy hearing. And this is just a waiver hearing to waive the publishing of a statement of affairs. And we've done this for the last four or five years with great success with the legislators. Now, if you recall, there was some mandate relief, and as part of that mandate relief, it was waivers. Now, that being said, I am asking for a waiver hearing to be held on December 14th, but I am in current communications with Hisby to find out what the exact process should be, because we may not have to have this waiver hearing. But I do want to at least get it on the docket, have it approved to have the waiver hearing if we need it. So stay tuned on that. I'm hoping by next week at the board meeting, I'll be able to give you an update. And maybe we can pull this, or maybe we can just continue to plan on having that hearing on December 14th.
Okay. Okay. All right. We're going to move on to building and grounds, and Mr. Fleck.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I will take this one. 9.10, updates, Mr. Rancasa.
Thank you. Got a few things to point out. Going down the list here, 1F, high school renovations and additions, that project, I just signed off on the final pay request to LAMP, so the books are closing.
Final, final.
Finally, finally. I have all the closeout documents. We're all done. So there is no agenda item for high school construction updates, I'm sorry to tell you.
Wow.
Woo-hoo!
Been a while.
It's been a few years, yes.
I think that started when I joined the board, so.
I did a little dance in the back room that day.
Yeah.
Anyone have a video of that?
Nope. I made sure there was no camera. Tenure life safety projects, the reports that we got back in 16, all the remedial measures, to the best of my knowledge, are completed. I made a statement to WOLD to begin the process, to go back out and verify, so they can sign off on completion reports to send to, through the ROE, Hisby. So that's close to done. On the matter, item four, when it comes to power procurement and solar, conversations with interested parties in potentially partnering with us have escalated. What I'm hearing from a group called IGS Solar is they made a preliminary presentation to me. I just received it. It took a couple of days of teleconference time to get through it with them. Their preferred mode of delivery was a power purchase option where they own it on our property. I told them I wasn't sure if that was the most interest of the board, but I would share that information with you, so it will be sent out to you pretty soon. The power price presentation, if there's an interest in calling them to be present to answer questions about that, I'd be happy to invite them. They'd be happy to come out, they said. I did share with them the idea that prior presentations have been of the motive, looking at a return on investment in we own, with some kind of understanding that not necessarily own immediately because of the loss of the potential tax credits if we own it right away. And I don't know how that legally works, but they said they have worked with some parties where, after a five or six-year period, after it's depreciated and tax credits are received, that they were able to transfer the ownership over. But that wasn't their preferred method of delivery. I also had a meeting with CTS today. They have been slowly working away on that. They've been distracted. They said on some other projects, that this is the second meeting I had with them to talk about it. I haven't heard from another party who is interested more of a power purchase option, interested in our land, and what I believe is as an agent of the local utility. And the local utilities are required as a part of their renewable portfolio. They have to put out so much renewable energy, produce it and have it out there. So it's an initiative that they have to follow. The interesting news, what I'm hearing is, in the month, there's an expectation in the month of December, the state of Illinois will be promulgating some rules modeled after some other states, one of being Massachusetts, where credits, like things like carbon credit kind of incentive dollars will be available. And the models that have been successful in several other states in the union are such that we have to, if you want the best available incentive, you have to jump quick, because then it drops down, the available incentives diminish a few delay for those other interested parties. So more conversation to come forward on that, but look for more on that. I'm not sure about this power purchase option. It's interesting, they offered things like, if they sell us electricity at a penny less than what we're paying now, you know, and it's $100,000 a year savings. If it's two cents less, it could be 200,000. And I have to wonder why they even give those options, you know, it's kind of interesting. But anyway, it's out there. It's some information. It looks like we could defer quite a bit of electricity, according to what they're showing here on their information you'll see on the PowerPoint. And you'll see some layouts of some possible parcels. I'm pleasantly surprised that the performance of the technology has improved to the point, I think, we don't even need to use all the available land that I proposed would be deferred by farming. I told them that we get cash farm rental money on some of this land, so if it was on the land instead of the roofs, because the roofs may not be enough to get close to our load. And in no way would I want to suggest that we take our entire load, because then we run the risk of having to sell power back to the utility, and then we change our tariffs, and our regular distribution rates go way high, and it's really not to our advantage. I think, I do believe, and as I've been studying our electric consumption very closely over the years, our best place to be is something that's close to what we consume, but not all of it. And by way of diminishing our demand, we'll see significant financial savings to the school district. So, and they all understand that and support that thought. When I talk about it, they understand it and say that makes a lot of sense as well. Because you can't, once you have these things, you can't just turn them off and have electricity go somewhere. So you've got to be careful about what you do. But there are people that would do a hybrid model, these IGS people, they said, we'll do a hybrid model where not only will we, you know, you could look at it if you want to, that geez, let's just fill up the parcel, and let's sell electricity back and see what the value is to that, to help the grid, so to speak, and be good neighbors to help defer carbon emissions in the community. So that's something we could look at.
I have a question.
Yes.
Kind of going back to the entity that wanted to own the equipment and then sell us the electricity, sells the power, would that change the property tax classification for our property, because now it's a for-profit entity using the tax-exempt land for?
That's got to be part of the analysis.
For profit.
Surely, yeah. I would have to believe that.
I have a problem with that.
Yeah. Yep, most likely.
Although, when we can add that to our levy and, you know, maybe.
The part that's really kind of, you know, the lazy man's part of me says, oh, that would be really neat, is they take all the risk. Everything's their risk. We're just out there being good stewards of the community by taking on renewable power in lieu of what we're doing now, though we're doing it pretty darn efficiently. And we are getting savings to top it off. But I seem to think there's more to it for us value than that. We need to look deeper. Water samples, for some sampling of lead testing, though, as I said, we don't really have to do it according to the statute right now, where everything is saying 2,000 or older, older than 2,000, and all our buildings are newer. Because it's just elementaries. We have a high school piece that's 96, but we're sample testing everywhere. Not every fixture, but every vintage of fixture in the district, in the water service to the buildings. We're out to bid on roof replacements. We had mandatory pre-bid meeting yesterday. We had 16 people at the meeting. We had a lot of interest. We walked two of the four roofs, because it's just a pair of twins pretty much, except for a little bit more at Marlow. And I look forward to a competitive, a good quality bidder bid opening coming up. We've done some restructuring, so that hopefully we can avoid some of the little games that were played with unit prices, if you remember what happened last year. But hopefully that won't be a problem this year. And we'll see what happens. Obviously, we're working on asphalt design. That's our next agenda item to talk about in a little more detail. And I'd be happy to answer any questions other than that.
All right. Thank you. Next item. 92, Cheswick Martin Traffic Flow Enhancement Design.
Okay. Adam Dean, and we have a guest with us, our consultant, Tim, from Kinley Horn is here with us. I mispronounce his last name every time, so I'm sorry. But they are kind enough to take the lead on this. There's a PowerPoint we'd like to show you. There's been a committee of the principals of Cheswick Martin and Early Childhood Center that have worked with Tim and Adam, and transportation departments participated in these meetings, and took a hard look at what we're doing, what our traffic flow conditions, Tim's been studying them presently, and what could we do to enhance that while we're in the process of replacing the asphalt there, which is up for replacement, our lifecycle replacement. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Adam, to begin a presentation to share with you what the committee consensus was, would be a good idea on how we could improve things while we're replacing it.
Good evening, members of the board. I just want to take a few minutes of your time to update you guys on the steps that we have taken for the possible enhancement of the Martin-Cheswick ECC parking lot. We are hopeful we answer your questions of why we are looking at doing this, what we are looking to do for the parking lot enhancement, and also how are we going to get there? Dan?
Yes.
Sorry about that. All right. So we'll start off with the why. Why did we get to enhancement of the Cheswick Martin ECC parking lot? It all did start, as Doug did say, the lifecycle of the asphalt needed to be redone. So it was a good time for us as the team to get together and think about, how can we completely enhance the safety of students, parents, staff members, and guests while we're looking at this? How could we better utilize the parking space that we do have currently? And how could we be more proficient in our drop-off and pickup times? We also are looking at enhancing the overall parking lot experience. Okay? And that's a little bit of why we are looking at doing this. What we are looking at doing, we'll get more into that with our traffic flow for each building, our new bus lot, possible enhancement at Cheswick. And finally, we'll get to your questions of how are we going to get there? And you have the schedule in front of you guys, as well as what happens if we do not act? In these next couple of slides, I just want to give you guys a little bit of an aerial overview. Hopefully, you can kind of see it there. All of the existing Martin-Cheswick parking lot with ECC in there. So it's kind of a very big, open space, okay? And we're looking to improve that. And there's a little bit closer view of Cheswick and ECC right there, and finally rounding it out with the Martin parking lot. So next up here, we're going to talk to you guys about the what. And I'm going to have Tim, our traffic guru, come up here and address these concerns that we have about also possible improvements we're looking to enhance.
Thanks, Mike. Good evening. It's good to see you all again. It's been a couple of years, but things seem like they're going well in the projects we've done so far and done with the high school. That's pretty awesome. We've been looking at Martin-Cheswick for a couple of years, largely because, you know, it was designed with a really open plan. There's a lot of pavement out there, and that makes it flexible. It works really well in those big events. When we've got open houses and we've got things going on, the space is really flexible. But during the day, during normal operations, that space actually becomes a little bit of a liability for us, because it creates kind of, you know, there's this open flow, so we get a little bit of a chaotic free-for-all. And if you've been out there in the morning dropping your kids off, people are dropping off all over. There's just a lot of different ways to get in and out, which can be good, but also has some drawbacks. So what we want to do is look to kind of corral this a little bit, and I had. And I had fun finding this great clip art image. There'll be better graphics to come. But we want to minimize some of these conflict points by controlling these different flows. We want to try and separate to the degree possible pickup-drop-off activity, pedestrian activity, bus activity, and parking, so we can keep those guys apart. So we're going to be reconfiguring the circulation in front of both schools. We'd be adding and enhancing or making improvements in most of the bus areas. We'll do consolidated access. So instead of having what is essentially an infinite number of ins and outs in, in front of Martin, we'll consolidate those a little bit and make that operate better. And then we've got enough pavement on that ring road to land a small jet. And people drive like they own a jet back there sometimes. So we're going to actually narrow that up a little bit and make that feel more like what we want it to be, a low-speed road and an educational campus. So those are some of the objectives that we're trying to, to get through. So here's the overall, do I need to be close to this mic for any reason? Here's the overall. You can see we're making improvements through the entire area. And as Adam alluded to, this pavement needs to be replaced anyway. We're going to be doing a little bit up here that we'll talk about, and then this ring road as well. And we're going to walk through each one of these, but you can see it's pretty comprehensive. Our palette to work with was basically from the sidewalks out and from the road in. And so we're making improvements or modifications almost throughout. So we'll start with Cheswick. As you all know, parents come in, there's another access right here. They come in and they circulate this way and they come out. That puts, since most of the traffic comes from Reed Road, every parent that's coming in is in conflict with parents that are coming out, and you have this overlap. So this is a lot like what we had at Marlowe before we switched the flow there. We also have a, you know, a clockwise circulation. So we're dropping people off on the driver's side. Again, this is just things we don't want to do, so we're going to change that. So here's the new pickup-drop-off. We'll have a central entrance road that'll be here. We'll eliminate the access that's over here. Parents that are doing pickup-drop-off will come in here. They'll circulate through here, and then they'll do pickup-drop-off on this face right here. And we're actually going to widen the area there so that there's a 10-foot drop-off lane. There's a five-foot buffer, so if you're getting out of your car, you've got some striped out area where you can feel safe. And then next to that will be a 12-foot bypass line. So creates a little bit more space, but gets the kids loading off the sidewalk on the passenger side like we want to do. There can be things that are done to increase the amount of queuing. We could put a set of cones right here and force everybody around here, and that would add some queuing. But we believe most days that we're going to be able to get all the, all the parents lined up around here in front of the school. Any questions about this one? We do have a number of parents that like to do walk-ins. And so we facilitate and separate them from the pickup-drop-off activity by creating a couple of entry points where they can get into the parking lot. Again, this is all open, and so what happens today is parents are running back and forth through here. We'll try and separate that a little bit from the queuing. For the ECC, there were a number of unique challenges with this facility and how we, we operated or have the flow work. These parents will operate in the same way, but they'll do pickup-drop-off right here at this door. And then there's a way for them to head straight out and get back out of the campus, minimizing their time in front of any vehicles that are parked. Right now, they're going right through parking aisles, and we want to minimize that. And then this is a new bus lot that would be created for ECC. So right now, they are loading and unloading in this area right here in the parking lot, including an accessible bus where we're loading a student on a lift riding out in the middle of the parking lot. So we would create spaces for the buses to be parked in here, and then a space right here curbside, right next to the door. Put a new sidewalk pad right there. We'll be able to load any special needs student directly onto the sidewalk so they're not out in the parking lot at all. And obviously, a much safer access for the students. This is only for buses. We're not going to have parents going along through here. So this is a new lot that would be created. We're able to fit it in and not impact the butterfly garden. But there's opportunities to, you know, add a sidewalk that gets out there. So that space could legitimately be a little bit more activated if we wanted to as part of that project. Any other questions about Cheswick? Does this make sense? Yeah.
So it's, the, the buses are going to nose in and then have to back out?
No, they all arrive and they would fill these spaces. Staff actually comes out and unloads each bus, and then they all leave together. So they would park in here, and then the first bus, when they're ready to leave, would peel out, and they can all then turn in that space without having to back out at all.
I guess I'm confused by the lines that are drawn there. It makes it look like they're parking spots for the buses.
They are. So a bus will pull in here, and there's a 10-foot striped-out area in front. That's where the kids would go, but once the kids are inside, the bus will actually pull forward in that space, turn the wheel over, and they can come through. And since they leave all together, the first bus goes and the second one has more space and all the way through. And they do the same thing when they arrive. They'll arrive, park, unload, kids are in, and then they leave.
And the slide prior to this, the ECC, prior to the ECC, the Cheswick drop-off, where are they exiting? So the, the red is the exit?
The red is the exit, yep. So you have this pickup-drop-off lane. Striped area, then once they get here, they're going to hop out into that bypass lane and move out of the school.
And why do we have the ECC cutting through and not following the same pattern?
Just to minimize the, the buses will be turning in at that access for ECC. Their ECC front door is right here, and they unload a small number at a time. So those guys will move out here so they're not in conflict with the buses. Could they go the other way? Sure.
Yeah, it would seem to me that, to make more sense, it's the same parking lot, have the same traffic pattern.
Certainly could.
Especially if parents are dropping off for both of them.
They're at separate times, but it could be done that way. Absolutely.
I see what Don is saying. I think it could be confusing if, you know, one year you have a child in ECC, the next year you're there, and suddenly you're having to drive differently through the same parking lot.
I under, I understand where the entrance of the ECC is and why the drop-off point's there. It's the exit of the vehicle after the drop-off. That's the.
Right.
The concern.
So if I can just speak up really fast. So the, like you said, the buses are coming in the same time and our parents are coming in to do like drop off or pick up. So as the buses are coming in to go into that lot, if the parents then are dropping off and coming out that way, there could be some cross-traffic of the bus and the car riders. So if they come out this way, you may continue their flow without having to cross over the buses. And the Cheswick car under line, our times are completely separate, so we're not in line with Cheswick's under line. Does that make sense?
Well, is it worthy then to change Cheswick?
No, we want to maximize that, that length. So we want, if an ECC parent were to pull forward and come out this way, it would not be a problem. They will have the option, and staff could even do something and set up cones if they wanted to, like they do today, to encourage ECC parents to leave here. But if they came forward and did what the rest of Cheswick parents are doing, they're just, they have a, a chance of being there when a bus is waiting to turn in.
How many buses?
Twelve to 13.
So we're going to, and, and how many parents dropping off?
Um, session one usually around 20 to 25, and then session two more like 15.
It's a small number.
So more cars than buses?
Oh, for sure.
But we're rerouting the cars? That doesn't make sense to me.
We're do, we're not doing anything special to provide that alternate path. So Cheswick drop-off parent could do this as well. Rather, to address the desire to minimize the conflict points between buses and parents, here's an option that would let the buses enter simultaneously with, with parents leaving.
That right turn that has to be made next to the orange oncoming, yeah, doesn't seem to be efficient. That seems to be a bottleneck. And then the sharp left turn, another bottleneck.
In, in terms of handling the volume of vehicles that are coming in?
Yeah, I'm just, I didn't, I don't know. Am I, am I blowing this out of proportion? It just doesn't seem, seems like over-engineering.
Don, I think being out at Cheswick when they are, while it seems like that's a big number, there's anywhere from 15 to 25 depending on the day. They're not all coming at the exact same time. I know they're dropping. So coming around that corner where it kind of looked like it might be tight as they're coming through, I don't think will be an issue there.
Like when you picture the car under line in Cheswick, or any of the elementary schools, there's that long line.
Yes, not like that.
We barely don't have that. We load, they kid, we walk every child out to the car and get them, and get them out because of their age. So you'll, we usually have about three or four cars moving at a time, and then they're late, and they load, and then three or four, and then wait, and then load. So it's not usually like 20 cars at once. Which we could definitely try to pull about that, I mean, go that same way and see if it gets in the way of the buses. And if not, it's not a problem. Are you just concerned like there'll be confusion with the parents for Cheswick to?
I'm concerned with a couple of things, and not the least of which is two different traffic patterns in the exact same parking lot.
Sure. And that's what we have today.
Because you're going to see one parent doing it a different way, and people will follow.
And it would be absolutely no problem to have them do exactly what the Cheswick parents are doing.
And if there becomes an issue, then we can look at it.
I do think that if you had them come out with Cheswick, because the buses are separate on that, Leggie has the same, they're dropping off, the buses and the cars are all out front at Leggie.
Right.
And, and so it's just really supervision management of having somebody out there to make sure, you know, that the one way comes through before the other one goes. So I think that, I think you could do the Cheswick flow and still work no problem.
Especially now that the buses are pushed off and they're like right now, they're right here, literally like you said, in the parking lot. They're right here. So we have kids unloading in the right lot, which is unsafe. So our cars can't go anywhere near there.
Yeah, and is that a grass median between the traffic flow and the bus lot there? That green?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It should be fine.
Right.
It'll be a completely separate area just for buses. Any other questions?
Thank you.
On Cheswick? All right. So Martin, you know, right now, this whole area is open. And this whole area is a pretty special place, particularly in the morning. So we want to try and, again, control this. So again, parents will enter in this main access driveway to both schools. They'll come here, they'll continue to do drop-off like they did today. It'll have that same cross-section, right? The 10, 5, 12, so people can bypass. That also would allow this to operate in the future if, as the district grew and we needed to have more students here, you could actually do side-by-side and have two lanes there, and it would, it would work as well. Staff parking is over here and in this lot as well. But there are a good number of parents, at least historically have been a good number of parents that also walk their kids into Martin. Right now, they are crossing everywhere. So what we'll do here is there'll be a landscape, there'll be a curb, and there'll actually probably be a fence. Right in front of a sidewalk, a parent can pull into this angled spot. They can load the kids onto the sidewalk in front of the vehicle, walk along that sidewalk over here to a raised crosswalk, one of those speed tables like we've done in some other places, and come across the pickup-drop-off line into the front door. So all of this will flow this direction, which is the opposite of where we're going with pickup-drop-off. And they'll come out of an access point right here that'll be an exit only. So we'll be separating exiting vehicles associated with pickup-drop-off from exiting vehicles associated with walk-ins. Because right now, they're all combining together, and that area gets really messy. Questions about this? A path. We'll talk a little bit about the road, but there'll be a sidewalk on this side too. So again, any parent's going to be able to unload their child not into a parking area where there's vehicles going every which direction, but onto a sidewalk. Walk to the middle, have a speed table where they can cross and head right into the school. It'll be angled parking too. We've got 90-degree now, so it'll be a little bit easier to get into and out of those spaces and have a little bit more visibility.
So that'll truly be a one-way.
Both walkers.
Lane there.
Exactly. Questions?
Be able to, it's all one-way, so they have to go out the same way they come in. They can't go back around. You know how it goes around on the other side? You can get to Marlowe.
Yeah, you'll continue to be able to get around.
You can still go that way then? Okay.
Just the one, there'll be a set of one-ways for pickup-drop-off like this.
Yep.
And walk-ins will be like that. But they'll come back out to the ring road where you can go either direction, including the exit and actually back around to Marlowe. All right. So this one's a little bit more complicated, and actually had to see this to believe it. This is the south side of Cheswick. We've got buses, regular buses that are coming in here. They're parking here. We're bringing the kids out, we're loading them. Once they're all loaded, all the buses are leaving generally together and coming out here to Reed Road. We also have two buses right now that are, have lifts. And we have a variety of private buses that are working back here. Those guys need to, they arrive at different times and they leave at different times than the regular buses. So right now, what they're doing is they're coming in and they're making this 180 almost-degree turn, lining up here, and then they leave. This driveway was not designed for two-way traffic. And so if there's a bus entering at the same time one of these guys is leaving, the bus here on campus has to back up in order to let the entering bus come through. And that's happening while students are on the bus. So we've got to get that fixed because that's not a safe situation. They're not supposed to do that at all. So what we're proposing to do is continue to allow regular buses to come in, line up where they have been, but create this little bulb out so that those private buses that come in, they can load in this area right here. Once they've loaded, they can come, they can use this turnaround and head back out. We widen the pavement here so we can have two-way traffic and handle that safely if there are any entering buses. And then for the special needs buses, where again, we are, right now, we're loading them over here, the back end of the bus where the lift is, is actually sort of in the driveway where these buses that are entering are coming by. So if there's inclement weather, there's rain that's splashing up, whatever, we're going to load these right on the curb. So those buses will come in. We've got spaces for four to five of them right there. They can load directly off the sidewalk, so they're never coming out onto the driveway pavement. And then they can leave and again, do that turnaround and head out. So this is a little bit of a, there's a lot going on back here. A lot of different groups that we're trying to, to serve and facilitate. But this little bulb out here, which would require cutting into this berm a little bit, lets us have two-way traffic and better and more safely facilitate what we're doing today already. So this one's a little complicated. Is this helpful at all? Are there any questions on this one?
I'm confused. Was anybody familiar with the use of that side by buses?
I didn't know about this until recently.
And what type of volume do we have? And why can't we route that volume to the front?
Yeah.
If you can use the mic so people can hear.
So today, this year.
Can you use the?
Could you use the microphone so people can hear? Thanks.
So we have 12 school buses that come in, plus I have two cross-boundary buses that come. Because they're cross-boundary buses, this year I have two. I've had more before. But because they're cross-boundary, they come in through the side there through Reed and come in through there, but they park at the end. Because they go all over the district, they have to leave before all the other 12. I have to load all those buses. So the cross-boundaries need to leave before we dismiss. So they're pulling around and coming out where other buses are trying to come in. Does that make sense? And then I have about nine daycare buses outside. So kinder care, two Learning Tree buses. There's a bunch of them that come, and they all park back there too. But then they turn around and come out so they can get to the other K-2 buildings or anybody else that's dismissing.
And why can't we have them in the front?
Because the parent drop off, the parent pickup line is so long, so the daycare buses can't be out by the parent pickup because I would never get them out in time to get to Square Barn Road. So they come from Leggie to us to Square Barn and we all let out at three-thirty.
We don't want the buses sitting in the same queue with parents. You really want to separate those two activities.
But we're spending money to put in a separate bus lot is what you told me.
Right. We're dealing with a lot more buses in this case.
This is not a new bus lot. This would add the addition so that they could turn.
No, I understood, but if we have a new bus lot being put in front of the school, why wouldn't we utilize that for the daycare buses?
We could, but our access to the building, ECC is connected to Chesapeake, but those doors are different. So our Chesapeake students don't go into the ECC. So their teachers might be in meetings or they have parent things going on. So our students don't go through. I mean, they would have to go through the outside sidewalk where we're doing parent drop off or pickup, which is on the other side, but ECC is completely separate.
And we don't have room to facilitate the number of buses up there that we would need to? So this is really doing the best that we can to serve a lot of different needs.
And.
Different timing.
And why do we have them doing a full one-eighty? Why wouldn't they just continue and then?
Because in this area, we're going to have all the other buses loading students. And so again, typically, we try to keep students loading away from other moving traffic. So all the buses arrive, the students are coming out, and there's a lot of activity that's taking place with those private daycare buses. They get their kids and they're out. Same thing with the cross-boundary buses. So this allows them to leave earlier than waiting for the entire school, those twelve, twelve or so buses, right? That load up in the regular area on the west side.
Okay, so how many buses do we have, regular buses on the left side of that lot?
Twelve.
Twelve, and how many spots are there?
I'm not sure.
There should be like fifteen or sixteen of them. I think there's like sixteen.
Okay, so there's at least three or four extra lots that could, spots that could be used for daycare loading there.
If we wanted to have them all operating in the same space. Because those buses are leaving before the others are. Ideally, we'd keep them separated. Because those buses are leaving well before these buses are. So they're loading still.
Do the buses, the buses knows in here to load for two children, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Isn't there any possibility of extending this area and allowing them to continue right through here and out? And without interfering with the bus loading and all that?
You potentially could.
And then move around?
You potentially could. Sure.
Because this looks like it's only being utilized for these buses when they leave, correct? They're leaving because we're facilitating the daycare buses to and out soon so they can use that. This wouldn't be in use until these move.
Correct.
I guess what would you do with the cross-boundary buses? With the wheelchair? They would still be coming off the back way because they have to leave before they load the cross-boundary and then leave.
Where does the cross-boundary bus?
All the way down at the end.
Right now, they're sitting right here.
I think I see what Donna's saying.
Well, they could go out this way too.
They could. We'd have to widen back here.
Right.
And that would be more expensive than doing what we're proposing.
But it would be better flow, wouldn't it?
Not necessarily. I'd rather keep.
You don't have this constriction point here. You said you're going to have to make this larger.
We're going to have to widen this radius right here to allow two-way traffic through there.
So if you don't have two-way traffic, you don't need to widen that?
Correct. You just need to widen that whole section. It could be done either way. What I like, this is probably a little bit cheaper and it keeps the activities of other moving buses away from where we're trying to load both large buses.
My like worry would be, so if we, because we did, we did talk about a little bit about that. So if we put them on the other side, I'll have students, like right now, if I have any buses late, so if they leave Martin late for any reason, so for today, we had a few buses that were late. So students, I have about seven hundred kids walking out there, coming out, and then buses are pulling in while kids are walking. So now if I have it on the other side, I'm going to have kids crossing through buses that they won't be able to see to the left or the right to get to a daycare bus. That's kind of what we talked about if we're putting them on the other side. So there's no pathway because they walk through the doors on the sidewalk and the sidewalk is so narrow. And I have it three lines deep of students, but they're crossing each other to get on each other's bus on the buses. So for safety reasons, we don't want them crossing by a bus to get to a daycare bus.
Yeah, I'm.
I get what you're saying. We talked about it too.
I'm not sure you do because I don't, I don't, I see the daycare buses continuing through. They're not loading behind the buses, so no one's walking through the buses. It's just.
Where would they load?
Right where you have them loading.
Oh, okay, so keep them where they're loading.
Yeah.
And then just bring them through.
Exit them behind the loaded buses.
Okay, okay.
So you could keep what we've got here and then bring this, this is an area where they come over. We widen back here, we create a buffer zone behind those loading buses and bring them out here. We're just going to widen that whole group. Which could be done. And if that's the preference, it's not an issue. Do you have any thoughts? Something we can look into, right? But in terms of, aside from whether or not we do a turnaround or do something along here to facilitate that, this area here to get people curbside for our cross-boundary buses and provide a separate area for daycare buses so they're not having to do things operating in the same spot as the intent. And we can look at those, the options as to where the exit. That's it for me. That's a lot for a traffic engineer on a Thursday night. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Very good. I think we're moving on to nine point.
Can I say a couple words?
Sure.
First of all, I'm surprised the president didn't tell us how much it's going to cost.
We, you, last month, you authorized us to enter into an agreement with HR Green to begin the design development for the asphalt replacement on the property. They have been giving copies of these preliminary documents and I asked them if they could put together a preliminary estimate of what this might cost to do this kind of thing. What you saw in the staff parking, parent drop off, pick off areas in the front, in the ECC bus area, they're estimating, and this is very rough at this stage because it's just a conceptual drawing, but they're, they're estimating. It's going to cost one point nine two million. Right now, to replace the asphalt as is up front, I estimated for you based on the history of the last couple of years of doing the kind of asphalt replacement with full depth reclamation of the gravel base we've been doing, that that was going to cost one point five eight six million. So the additional cost to do the enhancements in the front as conceptually drawn here, we're roughly estimating would cost an additional three hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Now in the back in the bus lot, the drawing that was shown there, the estimate there is that would cost an additional two hundred and seventy thousand. And therefore, all in, both front and back, would be an additional six hundred thousand over our original estimate of cost. At, I did give a timeline in the board report of, for the process and we're at the, we're at a key transition point in the very near future here where we need to deliver some, some design drawings and begin discussions with the Village of Lake of the Hills to be in compliance with their zoning ordinance review. We expect that process to take a while. As, you know, we went through with Huntley a couple of years ago and you know, there's stuffs you have to take and things, it'll take a while. Our goal is to get this thing out to bid in the spring so that we can get, to get early in the spring so we can get some interest of some good quality contractors at some competitive prices before they get their books of work full. So it's our goal to get going pretty quick, like if the board is comfortable with what's being shown. We understand the concern with the, with the physical design in the back with the Chesapeake bus lot. I will tell you that from what I'm hearing from the team of concerns with the, with the risks that we have going on back there, there is a thought that we just carve out the little bit of side of the berm, make that little half circle so that they can begin that as soon as possible with just gravel and begin being safe. Now with the idea of that we move, the idea to letting them, expanding the depth of that lot and letting them all travel in the same direction, I don't think that could be done real quickly before winter. And I'm not sure what the numbers would change like. But I will tell you with carving into the berm a little bit there, I dove in and did some research. I was hired right about the time in two thousand and two where Chesapeake was talking about a new addition, the kindergarten addition, that actually also added that entrance drive the bus lot is using, which the village insisted be aligned with the North Bridge subdivision development across the street. And there were some easement agreements going flying around. That little berm there was supposed to be landscaped by the developer across the street. They put the bike path, the little walk slash bike path that's there on Reed Road. We had to give a little bit of land to expand the width of Reed Road there. Then there was another easement that was given with a triangle of land for some, that Reed Road entrance exit for the campus drive there with the Covington Lakes development and, and looking into all that. So I asked each of the, we asked each of the villages already, just preliminary question. Do you have any concerns that we have to go through a lengthy review process if we were going to try to improve things in that bus lot real quickly? I can carve the side of the berm out. And they both said, no, that's, we understand and it would be fine if you wanted to go forward with that. We'll go back and review now and see with the idea of, you know, changing that and that should not be a, and we'll come back to you with something. On the matter of out front.
Well, before, before you go forward, I mean, I obviously expressed my concern, but I'm only one of seven members. I mean, if the rest of the board is fine with what's proposed, don't waste the time going back. I mean, if, if it's worthy of exploring, then. Yeah.
Okay.
So I'm hearing it's worthy of exploring.
Very good. There's no sense rushing into things that we're going to not to live with for a long time, so that's fine. I will also tell you that up in front where we're looking at putting in a little bit of extra pavement, we're taking out a lot, if you saw in that rendering, I don't know if you could tell, but there's a lot that would be removed. But, but there would be a little addition with that little early childhood center bus lot area. And my vision had been that we take all the grindings from removing the old asphalt and use that as fill, which will kind of soften the costs. And we can do some earth moving with the nice clay on our own property and build that up probably pretty, pretty cost effectively. And I'm sure that Jeff put that in his engineering estimate for now. But the grades are going to change significantly up there. There are two trees there right now between Chesapeake and Martin. One's in very nice condition, closer to Chesapeake, very healthy, big tree. And we'll see if we can get it moved or replaced if we move forward with this. Unfortunately, the other tree is a memorial tree. It did not bear vegetation this year. It's a memorial tree for the loss of a youngster many years ago. Mr. Ari is, and, and some of the other, I apologize, other people in the team have done a little bit of research to help, but we probably need to reach out to the parents there and offer to plant a new tree in a different location. I've already talked to one of the representatives of the Chesapeake-Martin Verification Committee, PTA Verification Committee, who's been very active in helping develop that butterfly garden and suggested to him that if this would go forward, we might have to relocate that as well. And, and they, he was going to bring it back and just give them a heads up that something might be happening and discussion would continue with them too. So just trying to think ahead on those things. But we have to go through the engineering review with the village. We have to do soil borings, we have to do a little more detailed surveying, which we intend to go forward with unless the board has any serious reservations with us moving forward with this design. Because the investments now, at this point in the engineering process, are going to get much greater. So that's why we brought this to you, to hear if you have concerns at this point in time. And we'd like to get all that done before winter so then we can be on the drawing board and be ready to pull the trigger as soon as the village blesses the documents in the spring while the ground's probably still frozen. Hey, if you can answer any questions at this time or please share any concerns that you have with the process that we've laid out for you.
Can this document be made available? Because I'm, because I'm thinking through all the different discussion points. I can't follow every kind of ebb and flow of the, what's where.
I don't see why not.
Okay.
It's, sure. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Tony, you look concerned. Okay, so you're ambivalent? All right. Okay. Well, thank you very much. We'll move that forward with what everybody was looking for on that. I lost my place, bear with me. Thank you. Nine dot three. Anderson Pest Control Service Agreement, Mr. Runcos. Anderson Pest Control, I've been working with them for a number of years. Their reputation precedes them in the state of Illinois is one of the best pest control services and very knowledgeable in the entomology and how to attack problems that we may have. And we're a very large operation and a lot of doors opening and closing and things going on. So we get some critters once in a while and some insects a little bit. And they're very proactive and very recognizing the laws in the state of Illinois that do not allow us to apply pesticides and they use things other than pesticides. In fact, I've been working then with, in this district now for, oh my, thirteen or fourteen years and they have never used a pesticide. They have other methods, chelms and baits that they use in cracks and crevices to treat for things where the children cannot come into contact with them. None of them have any kind of recognized aerosol kind of hazard, the products that they use and very safe in the schools. I have to answer any questions?
This doesn't need to be bid?
No, the, the cost of this contract is only, what is it? Five hundred and fifty-four dollars a month in the first year? Oh, okay. Yeah, it's not much at all. What we get for that is they visit every school once a month and expect the routine areas where things are known to happen in school facilities around the state. And then also they respond to service calls when we have identified pest sightings that we call them. I had no additional charge and come out and treat for them. Just for indoor service. The outside service, like if we're trying, lately, we've had some wildlife on the outside and we've had to do a couple of things that, those are, those are chargeable services, very minimal. Committee of two, do we have any? Okay, anybody else? All right, no problem moving this forward then? Very good. That completes section nine. Legislative update, section ten. I talked a little bit about what I was going to already, which is Senate Bill eight fifty-one, which has to do with a property tax freeze, which would affect Kane and McHenry County. Mr. Altmaier talked a little bit about that. Do we have any, there was supposed to be action today. It was scheduled to be considered in the House Revenue and Finance Committee and it looks like, I'm looking on the updates for that, and there were just a bunch of reps jumped on as co-sponsors of the bill. and it looks like, I'm looking on the updates for that, and there were just a bunch of reps jumped on as co-sponsors of the bill. Ms. Melendi, are you aware of anything else that's happening with this particular bill? Okay. Okay, well said. Alright, they are encouraging the, IASB is encouraging everybody to contact their representative and urge them to vote no on Senate Bill 851, so.
Yes, I believe the legislators in our area are leaning towards a no.
Okay.
Most, in our area.
Very interesting. I noticed that some of the co-sponsors that jumped on board were Cook County, that sort of thing, so. Note that Cook County already has Homestead exemption of 10,000 and a senior exemption, I'm sorry, I'm gonna get this, Homestead exemption of 6,000 and a senior, no, I'll try it one more time. Senior exemption of 8,000 and a Homestead exemption of 10,000. Ours are currently 5 and 6. And so, this freeze would also include that, that jump for homeowners as well. Okay. Any, any comments, questions on this? I don't really know much else other than what I said, so. Okay. Very good. Next item is community relations, and that's Ms. Melendi. 11.1, annual report.
Thank you, I'll be very brief. This is just kind of a sneak preview of the annual report, which should be mailing out to all district residents within the next few days. And of course, some copies will be made available at different locations as well. So, it is part of the packet, if you would like to scroll through and get a little sneak preview, it is there. We will also make sure we send it out via email to all of our residents, just to make sure they get it, in whichever format they prefer. The theme is "First to the Future" and kind of highlights a number of significant firsts that we experienced in the 2016-17 school year. So, there you go, just a little sneak preview. The real deal will be out in a few days and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Looks fantastic.
Yeah, it does look good.
Really does, reads real well, a lot of good information. Okay. That's for informational purposes only, nothing to move forward on that. Moving on to 12, Board of Education Minutes, 12.1. We have those, anybody have additions or corrections to that? Not, okay. Then we will then, I will make a motion under 13 to go into closed session for the items indicated in that, on the agenda. And that's, we need a second.
Yeah, that motion's made at 7:49, I'll second it.
Okay. And with that, roll call.
Mr. Kieran?
Yes.
Mr. Drizelle?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano? Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Troy? Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Okay, with that, we are in closed session, thank you.